Good afternoon. It is Wednesday, November 8th, 2023 at 1:00 P.M. Your Clark County, Washington Council is ready to begin the council time agenda. We begin with public comments, which is on items that are on the agenda only. The agenda, in fact, that is before you. So if you have a comment on one of those items, we'd like to hear from you.
Chair, I do not see anyone.
Online or in person?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for checking. We move to old business. Is there a motion, please, for approval of the minutes from October 18, 2023?
Motion to approve of the minutes?
Or second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes, edits, comments? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved as drafted. Oh, no, someone told me we have to vote. So all those in favor of approval of the minutes from October 18th, as it has been moved and seconded, please signify by saying aye.
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 There's a opposed name. Motion passed unanimously. Number two under old business, farmland conservation easements, easements, which is follow-up from legacy lands work session. Kathleen, would you kick this off?
Yes, I'll just hand this over to Kevin Tyler and the staff to talk about some questions from the last work session, as well as an update on the Heritage Farm Conservation Easement.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Kevin Tyler with the Parks and Lands Division. Also have Danielle Cowley here. And I believe Rocky Houston was going to join us calling in. Did you see Rocky? Okay, so Rocky's here as well. So we have two items to follow up with you on. One is the Conservation Covenant Concept for Heritage Farm. And we could speak to that first, if Rocky wants to talk about it first. And then we have some information about farmland conservation that we'd like to present. So whichever we can start with, it's up to you.
I'm not sure who you mean, but go ahead. Go ahead and choose the one that makes best sense to you, Kevin.
Okay. We'll start with the presentation because it's up. So what we're hoping to present to you today is just a bit of background research that we've done regarding farmland conservation following the work session with Council on the Legacy Lands Guidance Manual. As part of that background, I wanted to mention that the county finalized an agricultural preservation strategy report back in 2008. We reviewed that. And also, a rural land study was presented to Council in 2012. And these efforts identified similar themes for farmland conservation in the county, as we found in our research. And our review of various programs indicate that there are multiple considerations when it comes to acquiring development rights and safeguarding farmlands for sustained agricultural use. Conservation easements involve a willing seller or willing buyer transaction, where the fee simple title of the land is retained by the owner. A permanent restriction is then placed on the land to retain it in open space for farming purposes. The county or some other third party, like say the Washington Farmland Trust, would retain it in open space, would hold the easement, while the landowner retains flexibility for selling or leasing the property to another farmer. The goal here is maintaining farmland for long-term use. And these concepts could be applied to conservation of forest land as well. Next slide.
Danielle Cowley, Parks and Lands. As part of our research, we discussed with the executive director from Clark Conservation District. We also met with Pacific Northwest Regional Director from American Farmland Trust. We also visited with Nate Lewis, the Conservation Manager of Washington Farmland Trust. And we also met with Watcomb County Conservation Easement Program. Additionally, we've had conversations going with Skagit County. They have a farmland legacy program. Each program approaches the program uniquely, but some common themes include targeting larger parcels in rural residential zoning outside the UGA in an attempt to mitigate fragmentation of farmland and focus in areas of prime agricultural lands. There are mapped various GIS resources, soil data, involving various forms of agricultural advisory committees and also commissions. Outreach can be the most challenging... Sorry, next slide. One more. There you go. Outreach can be one of the most challenging components of farmland conservation due to the misunderstandings about conservation easement and finding the best way to build trust with the agricultural community. Partners with nonprofit organizations using farm ambassadors or landowners who have worked through the program can help substantially. The timeline for working through a governmental process can also be challenging, especially if you're leveraging state and federal funds. Typical requirements placed on landowners with farm easements include preparing and then monitoring against a farm plan. To purchase the easement, an organization will typically prepare an appraisal, a review appraisal, including other due diligences. Easements usually include flexibility, like allowing for land to go fallow and making changes to agricultural practices. The holder of the easement is typically the one that performs the annual inspection of the property.
Valuation of conservation easements for farmland purposes are challenging. In our research and discussing this with other agencies and entities, you know, we understand that development... That the development value is the difference between the highest and best value of the property and the agricultural value. So in terms of estimating easement value, we would want to look at the discount that a county provides for taxation purposes on farmland as the extreme bottom end of that valuation. So think of the current use program here at the county. And then you look at recent comparable sales, you know, market value for property, and then you can subtract out the difference. In talking with Nate at the Washington Farmland Trust, he said they typically estimate 30% to 60% of the market value of a property. And the biggest factor is the range in potential development. So the more that you can subdivide a property, the more value it carries. Next slide, please. In addition to conservation easements, we look at other options out there for farmland conservation. So we're going to highlight a few of those for you today. So one of those would be simultaneous sale. This is where a farmer wants to sell their property. And so they find somebody who wants to buy the property and farm. And at the same time, an agency like the county or like a Conservation District or some similar organization would purchase a conservation easement. So the sale happens with the two parties simultaneously. Another option that we reviewed was the Buy Protect Sell Program. This is where the county may acquire a property that's prime farmland, place a conservation easement over it, and then sell it to a willing buyer that would then farm it in the future. And the county would say retain that easement in perpetuity. Next slide, please. Buy Protect Lease Program. So this would be similar to something the county already does. We own conservation lands. We have a handful of those that we lease for agricultural purposes. Hay leases, grass leases, different things of that nature. So this is a program that could be expanded and something that we're already looking at. What properties does it make sense to put out there for agricultural purposes while at the same time reducing the county's maintenance costs? That's been the focus to this point, at least. One thing that we discovered at Skagit County is called the Agricultural Land Preservation Code. And this is a special zoning provision for subdivision of a lot of record in the agricultural zoning. So think that's the resource zones that we have, like Ag 40 or Forest Resources 40. You could subdivide a property and create what would normally be a substandard lot. So say there's a home on a 40-acre property that's farmed. You would subdivide it, create that substandard one-acre lot for your home. And then in exchange for that, you essentially dedicate the remaining 39 acres for conservation purposes, for farmland conservation purposes. And then you are able to retain that one-acre lot at its highest and best use and sell that. You retain the ownership, underlying ownership, fee ownership of the 39 acres, but then it's conserved for farmland in the future. That was an interesting program that we learned about at Skagit County. And then the last couple of things are, Washington Farmland Trust has a farm-to-farmer program where you're matching up people who want to farm, who don't have access to farms, and people who don't have a plan for handing their farm down to the next generation, or so on. And then Transfer of Development Rights Program, which is where you have individuals or privately-owned property in farmland, forest land, or natural areas who essentially protect their property in exchange for sending those development rights to areas that can accommodate more development. So the landowners in the sending areas, that would be the natural resources, farmland, forest land, zoning, send those development rights to areas where then... And they're compensated for that, those development rights. And then in the receiving areas, the development area, developers would then pay for those higher densities. So that's a program that's out there in different parts of the state. I believe King County has a Transfer of Development Rights Program. Next slide.
So the next one we're going to talk about is some grant project opportunities. A lot of the agencies we spoke to leverage their funds. So there is the Washington Recreation Conservation Office has the Washington Wildlife Recreation Program. It's the farm preservation. They call it the WWRP Fund. They also do forest lands as well. That is a 50% match for basically protection of extinguishment of development rights. And then the other one is the NRCS. So they are also doing the same similar thing. They work with private landowners, tribal landowners, et cetera, land trusts. And they are working for... Working on farmland to help farmers and ranchers be able to lock some of that development potential up. They offer 50% of the fair market value. And that's their program that they have. So many aspects of what we're discussing today is very similar to forest land properties. And it could be relevant in that way. So if you wanted to protect agricultural land, you could do the same similar for forest lands. Just we want to bring that up as well. Thank you for your time and your consideration. And we're here to answer any questions or receive any feedback you may have. Yeah, thank you.
Are there questions from Council?
Chair, I have a few questions.
Please go ahead.
Where do I start? Just wrote them down as I went along here. Oh, in terms of the conservation options on page 7... And we don't have Ag 40, we have Ag 20, so Ag...
Sorry, yeah, that's correct. My mistake.
It might be nice to have Ag 40. There's things you could do with that. But with the Ag... I know right now we have a cluster development, so there's some ability to divide property. A good deal more division than is allowed in Skagit. But another option I was thinking about is if there could be... It could be that there is a farm that's 19 acres that's legal, non-compliant, and a neighboring farm that maybe is 10 acres. So with a lot line adjustment, I'm not sure what you call that. But it could be that the one or the other of the properties could change the boundaries and create a one-acre lot if someone wanted to get out of farming. And then there could be created a larger farm that could be legal and compliant. So that could be an option as well. You know, and I don't know, I have asked for if there's a... If we could evaluate what the cluster... How much agricultural land actually has been conserved or has been used related to the cluster option? Because I know there's been a good deal of that going on in my neck of the woods. And with the TDR program, I know that's something that's been talked about for a long time. And it seems to me that given that there's already a lot of density that is allowed, and maybe in the future there'll be more density allowed, if it has been really evaluated whether a TDR program is really something that could work in Clark County.
That I don't know. It was one of the recommendations in that 2008 study that I mentioned. I think connecting with community planning would give us more insight into Transfer of Development Rights Program and how that was evaluated in years past and how it may or may not work for the county. But we weren't able to have those conversations with Oliver's team yet.
Okay. And... Yeah, I can't think of any other questions right at the moment. More may come to me, but I'll reserve my right to ask more later. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So Rocky Adell, I thank you so much for all these great ideas. Some of them I would not support right away. I think they're just too hard to do. But great ideas. And I want to know, number one, what do you feel capable of doing? I want a next step. I want to launch on some of these ideas. So, you know, the TDR program, I would say forget that. I don't think our county is set up for that, and it sounds too complicated. The concurrent sale, trying to get in... Number one, discovering that sale from a farmer to another farmer, and then trying to be nimble enough to keep up with the sale and convince the parties that the county's got a good plan to put an easement on it. I just don't think... I think that's too unwieldy. One, I would love for the county to sell off its existing farmland that it's leasing right now with covenant restrictions on them to continue it with farming. I think that's a great idea. We need to get out of the business of just owning land that we don't have any specific use for. And I think that's a way to benefit this conservation effort of farming within the county. I would go to the smallest acreage that we possibly could. And I'm just going to target five acres for now. But I'd sure like to see, even within the urban growth boundary. I don't know if we have a filter on GIS that could tell us if any of those spaces exist. But within or without the urban growth boundary, five-acre parcels that people are interested in conserving, I would like to make that a possibility for them. So I want to know what you support, what you recommend? What do you think you have the capability? What's the easiest to roll out, like Heritage Farm? I want to do this. I don't want to... And you've teed up a lot of good ideas here to roll this out. So I'd like to have some next steps on what you recommend that you think is the easiest to put into place.
That's a great question. Thank you. I think, first off, I'd say that we already are working on some things, right? So the capital plan that you approved just yesterday has $2 million in it for farm and forest conservation projects over the six-year period. So that's about 12.5% of the total budget for legacy lands projects. So we have one project in play right now with Washington Farmland Trust. Appraisal process is going on, and we should have more information to share about that project very soon. We have another project identified for 2024 where we'd like to do the same thing. So I think the easiest thing for us to do is the traditional farm conservation easement types of projects. And we have a couple of ideas of forest or farm owners that might be opportunities that we're going to reach out to soon. I think another one that we've talked about recently is that concept of buy, protect, and then sell. Because the conservation easement concept is not easy. It's not easy to communicate. It's not easy to garner that trust. As Danielle mentioned in one of her first slides, that outreach with farmers is one of the more challenging things to accomplish because of those misunderstandings. So that's another one that I think that we would like to pursue as well. And then your point about property that we could sell, I mean, I think that's something that we could look at. A lot of the properties that we own are, you know, bought with conservation futures and leveraged with grant funding. So as long as there aren't grant limitations to selling it, then, you know, that potentially could be an option. But I think leasing for agricultural purposes is also an option, provided that it reduces the county's maintenance obligation for these properties.
So Rocky, what I'm trying to advocate is for, one, we need to advertise this. Two, we need a budget. How much are we willing to invest in this across the county? And let's roll it out in whatever easiest mechanism we have to do so. You know, and I want to be fair to farmers, but on the other hand, I don't want to just hand over money for people. You know, basically, I want to be fair and have, you know, all the different funding mechanisms and valuations. I understand that can be pretty complicated and hard to put in place, and probably among the hardest, especially if you have to stay within a budget that we would agree on. But so let's put a plan together, you know, some nuts and bolts. What's the budget? How are we going to proceed? And then let's vote on it and put it in place. I appreciate the efforts that you're doing on the few properties that you're working with. But kind of what I'm envisioning is a set program to preserve farmers' farmland, both within and outside the urban growth boundary, down to a five-acre farm.
I thought of a couple of other items if I could toss those in.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Did you find out anything about agricultural production districts kind of targeting areas where you might want to invest if there was a TDR or conservation easement? Because I know with agriculture, it's helpful when you can cluster a number of farms together. There's fewer conflicts. There's mutual support that can occur. And I think especially as we're moving into the comp plan update, it'd be good to visually understand as best we can. I know the conservation district has done some heat mapping, and I think the Washington Farmland Trust as well, that we could produce some maps that say, oh, well, these are really the important areas for agriculture that we'd like to try to strategize on protection.
I think what we learned is that those two agencies or entities that you just mentioned know a lot more about this than we do. And so we did talk with the Conservation District about some work that they've been doing recently, like you mentioned, heat mapping. Where are farms and where are the most appropriate locations for farms to be in Clark County? And then same thing with Washington Farmland Trust. So I think we would want to lean on those two outside entities to help us understand that and then map the data. So Conservation District had a site that they are already working on, right?
Yeah, and I might add that American Farmland Trust also has their own mapping, and they have provided that to us. The other thing that is of note to understand is that they say you can map and you can do all that work, but quite frankly, you already know where the good primal land is. So they said mapping's great, but you probably already know where the prime location for agricultural land is.
Well, I think it's just good to identify, put it on a map, you know, and without really applying any sort of regulatory thing, but just to understand these are the areas that we're most interested in. And then, and I agree with Counselor Medvedje, let's develop some sort of program and strategy. And I think that the lag in really being able to roll out that conservation easement with the 1.5 million in legacy lands is that we didn't really... It was just a one-off. We didn't really have a framework for it all to be put into. So I'd be very supportive of that. And a concern I have related to properties that we already have purchased that are being leased for farming is that if they were purchased under legacy lands, they're purchased within the guidelines of the Legacy Lands Program. So, and it may be that if we haven't figured out a plan for restoring those lands for whatever purpose, that it's very convenient to have them leased out to farmers to maintain those properties until we have the funds or a plan in place for some of those lands. So I would hesitate on looking at selling off any of those lands. I think the public would be very concerned about that. And thanks for putting this together. It's great.
So you did understand, Sue, that I was talking about selling it with the easement on it? So it would be conserved like any other land?
Oh, great, that's good to know.
To have it as a farm?
Yeah, thank you.
It's just a different strategy to get there.
Got it.
Are there other questions?
Chair Berman, Ms. Cuffling?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, I've heard two counselors supportive of looking at preserving farmland or looking at farmland in and out of the urban growth boundary down to five acres and put together a plan to bring back to Council, including budget. I just want to make sure that that is the support of the majority of the Council, so that Kevin and his team have clear direction.
Here's one.
I do as well, Kathleen. I do have one question. If the county were to go into one of these proposed programs, which it looks like there's quite a few, would we be talking or partnering or consulting with any kind, in any way, with the Washington Farm Bureau at all? Has that been looked at or considered?
Yeah, I would say definitely so. That would be one of the entities that we would reach out to and make sure that we are, you know, outreach to them to help sell the program, to help tell the story of the benefits of, you know, what farm conservation easements can do, both for the community and for the individual farmland owner. So yes.
Okay, thank you for that. I support this.
Sounds like you have four, Kathleen, at least.
Sounds like you have four, Kathleen, at least.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So the second item was the Conservation Covenant for Heritage Farm. And I, I do believe Rocky Houston is on. There was a copy of it posted to the, to the website. I'm not sure if any of you have had a chance to look at it. We can bring it up to the screen right now. Rocky, would you like to say anything about this?
Sure, thank you, Kevin. I, Counselors, for the record, Rocky Houston, Parks and Lands Division Manager. So in front of you on the board is a draft Conservation, Conservation Covenant that, for the protection of protecting farm, the natural history interpretation of that demonstration of farming, education of farming, and talking about the farming history at the site and around the area. So this covenant would meet those protections to allow the existing uses and the uses that are identified in the master plan to, to be preserved with this Conservation Covenant. The covenant identifies that the master plan for the site would be the land use document. So through public process, as we update the master plan in the future, that would be the tool to review any changes to activities that are occurring there. Additionally, it also identifies that the farm has a National Register of Historic Places District for the Clark County Poor Farm over it. And that's an additional land use restriction or, or process that one must go through to do any activities on the farm. So we'd like to have any comments and feedback on this as we continue to move forward with presenting this at a future date.
I, I have a question. Did, did you coordinate with the, I know that various advisory committees related to the Heritage Farm have, has, has this been discussed with any or all of them or is that be a later stage?
At, at this time, Counselor, we have been working internally and with the PA's office to, to create this consistent with what we've heard through various public meetings. So we've taken the feedback informally to try to get this addressed to provide the security that the farming would continue at the site. If this did move forward, it is consistent with the master plan. We, we could move it to a Heritage Farm Advisory Team meeting to have them review it as well. But at this time, we were not looking to, to do that. We were looking to, it's get the feedback and move it forward if, if that's the direction.
Thank you.
So Rocky, I, I would really like to move forward. My one question is the, basically where the Hazel Dell Park is. And, and I know that there at least was discussion or allocation of additional Heritage Farmland to the Hazel Dell Park. I don't know if that actually was transferred to by deed. So my question is, if we, if we put a conservation easement over Heritage Farm, what happens on that side of the farm with that land that isn't part of the park yet, but was at least in some manner transferred to the park?
Sure, great question, sir. So my understanding, and we'll review this again to make sure what I'm saying is accurate, is that there was a five acre transfer. The southern area that's inside the fence is, was transferred to, to be part of the park in the northern area, this sort of high area where Lulac is, was switched. And so that was the most agriculturally productive property was sort of put inside the farm boundary and that lower area was taken out. So this, this would be following along with the current 78 acres, 79 acre of the farm as it is today. Now in regards to the National Register of Historic Places, that overlay encompasses both the park, Hazel Dell Community Park and the Heritage Farm as it sits today.
Thank you. You have my full support.
Rocky, just to play devil's advocate for some in the community who have wondered how this works when there is someone who wishes to use especially new land, but the land in Heritage Farm or something other than farming. So let's say that you have someone come to you and they want to manage a strip mall in the property that would be consistent with historic places in that it would offer equipment that could have been used back then or whatever, but it is not farming per se. How would you use this covenant to respond to them?
It's a great question, ma'am. So I, I think this covenant would do a, a couple of things. First, we would look at the master plan and identify if that use was identified. If it wasn't, we would indicate that the master plan doesn't identify that that use is allowed and that we have this covenant that is focused on the items that are identified. In addition, the, the red, the National Register of Historic Places overlay is, I'm not saying that they wouldn't approve that use, but that typically they're trying to keep it in a condition that's consistent with it as a poor farm. And so the installation of an additional hothouse or greenhouse on the property has been denied. Or, or so there, it is a pre-throw review by the Historic Heritage Commission. So those are those three things. They'd have to get the Heritage Commission to agree to it. Our master plan had to be addressed. And this covenant would, they'd have to confirm that this, that use is consistent with me educating, demonstration, preservation, interpretation of the site's natural features and farming history, where that would be a, maybe a hard stretch to, to do that, that strip mall is consistent with those elements. And just one.
It's not a strip mall.
Oh, sorry.
Something different.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I said, I'm misunderstanding.
They say it's not a strip mall, but, but something different. Something that has been proposed before, a greenhouse. Because a greenhouse certainly goes back in history. It's not some, it's not a new concept and it supports the development of the farm, some would say. How would you use this covenant with response to them?
If it was a greenhouse that was supporting a program on site or a proposed activity that we were looking to add, we would first direct them to the Heritage Commission for them to review that and determine that that's allowed use and the building would be permitted. Before then, we would be able to look at entering into an agreement with them to install that greenhouse or, or moving it forward. It would be consistent with the master plan. And, and you're right, it is consistent as a farming practice and demonstration or use of it for farming. But we, they would still have to ensure that the Heritage Commission approved it as well.
And if I may take just a moment, this is Kevin McDowell, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. There's one just additional tidbit of information that I would like to make sure the council is aware of because the county is both the grantor and the grantee on this potential covenant that we're discussing. That therefore, if a future council worked to decide that they wanted to rescind the covenant or to modify the covenant, they would be able to do so because, again, because the county is the grantor and the grantee. So we're not, it would, it would be ineffective if the county, county ever decided to sell the property, then that would run with the land. But as long as the county is the owner, future councils would not be bound to keep any such restrictions in place. Just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Other questions from council?
So that's an interesting point. And I'm wondering if there's a third entity or a fourth entity we could bring into the deal so that would be binding. That's an odd situation. I hadn't thought of the grantor, grantee, and the fact that it really wouldn't be a binding easement. So, but there may be a legal strategy to bring in another party that would make it very difficult to unravel.
Counselor, we, we had not looked at that from that perspective. We can, if you'd like, try to identify a potential partner to consider this.
I would support that.
Just seeing if we've got three counselors that want to move forward with the concept in general. So you know my, you know my, my feelings.
I, I'm supportive and I would be interested in exploring a third party that could hold that.
I support that as well.
Are there, is there another counselor, a third counselor?
I support that as well. This is Counselor Belkot, Chair.
Okay, that makes three, Kathleen. Is there anything else that you need? Yes, go ahead, Rocky.
No, there's, thank you. Yeah, I think we will take this information and we'll do, identify, credit, identify a third party. And when we've done that, we will work to modify this covenant to include that third party and, and come back to you when, when we've got it ready.
Okay, very good. That certainly sounds like a next step. Kathleen, is there anything else that you wish to add as far as next steps on this topic?
Now, once the staff have an update, we'll bring it back to council time before we put this on a Tuesday meeting for council's final consideration.
Okay, very good. Well, let's move in. Thank you for your report. That was very interesting and needs that continual follow-up that you're giving. So thank you. Now we turn to new business and item 3.1 is ARPA funding, new request. Kathleen?
I believe Laura Young is going to take the lead on this. Mark Gasway was going to, but he is out on a vacation. So Laura, are you prepared to present this information?
I am. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, counselors. As Kathleen said, Mark Gasway is out today. So I will be providing a brief overview of the ARPA obligations expenditures and available funding as well as a summary of the, excuse me, as well as a summary of the ARPA funding requests being presented today. I believe there are also representatives from each of the requesting departments present today to answer any questions you may have about the specific details of each of the funding requests. If you look at the grant fund balance slide on the screen, you can see that the county received a total of 94.84 million dollars from the ARPA State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Under the Revenue Recovery Projects, $32 million of this amount was previously allocated and adjustments in the previous awards have increased the commitment under the Revenue Recovery Project Group to 35.01 million. The additional 1.81 million will be distributed from the ARPA Fund to the Revenue Recovery Fund to cover the increase. As of the end of the third quarter, 4.84 million has been spent and 30.17 million remains unspent in that fund. Under the ARPA Fund, currently 61.63 million dollars are allocated to the ARPA Fund. And of this amount, 56.18 million has been committed. 29.27 million has been spent and 26.91 million remains unspent. After making the 1.81 million dollar adjustment for the Revenue Recovery Project increases, this leaves 3.64 million dollars uncommitted and available in the fund. Today, there are three new staff report requests that are being presented for the council's consideration and one request to repurpose unspent funds in an existing award. Public Works is requesting the county council to approve an ARPA fund allocation in the amount of $5,307,500 to remodel and upgrade aging buildings throughout the Public Works 78th Operations Center in order to improve and increase workspace for Public Works staff. The request also includes funding to hire a program in the project. Sorry, there's a little bit of feedback. District Court is requesting, I'm sorry, next slide. District Court is requesting the county council to approve an ARPA fund allocation for one-time funding, a one-time funding request of 29,500 for years 2024 and 2025 to fund courtroom zoom licenses in order to meet equal access requirements for providing a virtual courtroom environment. Next slide, please. Indigent Defense is requesting the county council to approve an ARPA fund allocation for 2024 and 2025 to cover the initial cost of setting up the county public defense office. The total amount requested is $3,071,031. After the first two years, these costs will transition to the general fund indigent defense budget and be covered by savings from decreased contract services. Next slide, please. Finally, the Public Health Department is requesting county council to reallocate $54,000 of the ARPA funds already allocated to Clark County Public Health for the continued, continued use of the rented refrigerator trailer used for morgue expansion at the medical examiner's office through 2026. The reallocation is intended to come from the Public Health ARPA-funded after-action review project budget in which the ARPA-funded portion was completed, $80,000, under the approved allocation. So those are the staff reports being presented today. And there are staff online who are here to answer any questions about the staff reports. Are there any more questions for me? Do you want me to delve into them individually?
Would you, would you or Kathleen or someone directly connected with this just comment in general on the status of ARPA funds? If these requests are granted, at what, at what point do you feel like we've gotten the appropriate use of ARPA funds with sufficient amount of funds retained?
Chair, I'm not quite sure what you're asking on, can you repeat that?
Sure. If these funds were granted in toto, we would not have 26.91 million remaining, but we would still have a very large number remaining. Would you comment on?
Yeah. Yeah, so we actually don't, we don't have that much remaining. The amount that is not committed is only 3.64 million. So the request in front of you, and this is not for final approval, it's just a, a general like, yes, we're supportive and we'll put this on a Tuesday meeting. But the request before you exceeds the 3.64 million.
Okay, so would you contrast, please, the 3.64 with the 26.91 million shown on the chart?
The 26.91 million is what's already been committed, but they're still spending that amount through prior commitments and approval.
Okay, so given the total uncommitted is 3.64 and then given that all of the funds requested for new requests could not be granted from that amount of money, do you have any comments on the usage of ARPA funds for these particular requests regarding what you know or maybe coming in the future?
Well, I don't think we're going to have more. Well, I don't think we're going to have more. Go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say, in other words, would this be an appropriate way to use up those funds? In your judgment?
So all the requests that are before you today have been vetted through Laura and her office to make sure that they meet the regulations with ARPA funding. So that and the Zoom, I mean, I can certainly go over each individual package and address it individually.
Well, I mean, just take, take, for example, if Public Works at 5 million were granted, there wouldn't be enough uncommitted funds for them. So, given that this right here may represent the total that's going to be requested from the uncommitted, or maybe there are more new requests yet to follow. So would you just comment on your, what you see as the appropriate use of the uncommitted funds?
Okay, I will share my opinion, but of course, it's council's final decision. So this was open back up to all the departments and offices. When we had the last request come through council, Public Works had turned theirs in a day late of the 5.3 million. I believe that that's about the Pub, or the 78th Street project. So that was not included because they did not meet the deadline. And so as we had other requests come forward, such as the public defense FTEs, that one is being requested as a stopgap between starting a public defender's office with the FTE. If not, we don't approve ARPA for ongoing. So then in the future, as they reduce contracts, that money will be reallocated to take over the ARPA ongoing. So the FTE would be maintained through the reduction of contracts that we have. So I know that that is a strategic one that's coming through because of the budget process and also looking at the public defender's office. The Zoom license is something that courts have to do as they're moving forth their services. We will be talking with IT, and we have over the last year, to see if there's any cost savings by consolidating the licenses throughout the county, because a lot of them are using Zoom licenses. So if I was asked for my recommendation, I probably would not support the Public Works one, just because I don't think we've gone into, and Ken's up here probably ready to correct me, but I don't think we've gone through a thorough analysis with facilities to actually look at those buildings and see what, what makes sense. And so I think that's more of a longer-term capital item. And if council's still supportive of a public defender's office, I would recommend that package. I would recommend the Zoom license package if, I believe there's enough with the 3 million that public defender's office would be. And then Public Works, or Public Health is just asking to reallocate some of the funding that was already given to them to use for a different purpose. So I-
Well, thank you, and I understand that what you said, you're a little uncomfortable when it creeps into policy, but thank you for, for doing that, because from that, we've learned that there is the need to explore more with Public Works for what is entailed with the 5 million and how that would actually pencil out. So what are you looking for from us today? A sense of direction?
Yes, a direction, and you have council supportive of moving a staff report and requests forward to a Tuesday meeting for final consideration.
Personally, I'm supportive of that, along with a Public Works exploration in detail of the requests that they have made.
And I, I would also say, you know, there's a lot of capital requests that we have throughout the county that we've been evaluating over the last year with our new capital program. So there's plenty of opportunity to include that as part of our long-term planning and also to ensure we have the most accurate amount, dollar amount reflective.
Other comments from council?
I have input, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So it's kind of came out of the blue from Public Works, and I don't favor that at all right now. As you stated, that's really a long-term capital plan that needs to be evaluated for the need and comes over many other projects that are ongoing in, in the county. The Zoom licenses, it's a de minimis amount, maybe we'll have it. I don't have any objection to that. The transfer of funding for repurposing of the funding, I think we should absolutely grant that. So here's my general take as we are down to the wire now on allocating these ARPA funds. The highest and best use of these funds has always been where you spend it in the short term, but it pays dividends over decades. And so, for instance, what we did with the treasurer's office on the down payment, investing into our jail, things like that, we're going to, we're going to see years of benefit from investing that money. As far, so right now, what I fully support and want to see this last remaining money allocated to is building our public defense office. It is to get us over the hump. It's an investment as we transition from these 60 to 80, I've lost count of the number of contracts we actually have. We transition that down to a conference council contract, and then all those other positions become full-time positions in the public defender's office. That'll take time and it'll be really hard to manage, and I think Amber's got a good plan for doing it. So I'd really like to invest our ARPA funds to make the public defender's office a reality, because it'll get us over the funding hump, the initial outlay, and get the program going. So I, that's where I would like to see this last remaining money spent. You know, if there's other repurposing that comes up, fine, but now we're down to the last three or four million, I think our public defense office, it should be the recipient.
Chair?
Other comments from council? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank, thank you. I, I agree with that related to the public defense office would be a good investment and appropriate use of the ARPA funds. I was just, you know, in terms of adding up the requests and the remaining funds, it seemed like it was right around 9 million, and I, I wouldn't favor bringing forward proposals that will then compete with each other. I think we need to bring forward proposals that we have the money to cover would be helpful. And related to the Zoom licensing, is that an ongoing, that we will pay that year after year after year? And is that really, that seems less appropriate related to, I know it's not a lot of money, but it seems less appropriate related to ARPA funds if it's going to be an ongoing expense?
Yes, I anticipate it will be ongoing. They're only asking for one time, and as I said, we will work with IT to see if there's a way to consolidate that and look, because you will see some annual budget requests as well of individual or departments who are asking for Zoom licenses.
Great, great, but yeah, I, so those are, those are my thoughts.
Other thoughts from counselors?
I, I have some comments, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, please.
The comment that Counselor Marshall, Marshall just made about the licenses, I thought ARPA funds could not be for new or existing things, like, I know that we have to, again, going, not to beat a dead horse, but I know that we need the, the Zoom licenses, but I thought that doesn't, those don't even fall in the category of ARPA funding.
The ARPA, should I answer? Counselor Belkot? I can-
Yes, please.
Additional information? Yes.
Thank you.
The, the expenditure categories have been revised multiple times over the course of the last two or three years. And so the initial expenditure categories were quite restrictive, and they've been broadened multiple times since we first started reviewing these projects. And so in 2022, for example, they added these project expenditure categories for administrative capacity, and they're very broad, and they allow for just general administrative services. And they've even expanded those further now to include some other things that we'd never even considered. And so I can provide you more background information on the breadth of those expenditure categories, but to answer your question is, yes, they were limited in the beginning, much more restrictive than they are now.
When did those restrictions lessen, Laura?
They were, they were lessened in 2022 and in 2023. So they, they provide periodic updates in the guidance, and I, and the last one we received just was in September of this year.
Thank you.
Other thoughts from council? Is there support from counselors for suggesting that the three projects minus Public Works be tracked for their impact and both programmatically and funding-wise under new requests? Is there a different proposal?
So I, I'm putting forward that the Health Department gets its transfer of funding, repurposing, and that the remaining amount goes to fund our public defense office. All other requests will go into our capital projects, work, ongoing work that the manager and deputy manager are pursuing.
And Counselor Mavadji, were you supportive of the Zoom license for District Court?
Well, i- if we have it left, I mean, it's not a real high use of the funding, but yeah, if it's only 24,000 and, and, and the executive branch supports it, then I would support sending it.
Well, thank you, and that makes two of us.
I agree with, I agree as well.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, just want to agree.
Okay, so it looks like we have all four counselors that are supportive. So the next step is this, these three staff reports will be on a Tuesday, Tuesday agenda for your final consideration and vote at that time. So that's all, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Now let's move to the planning commission discussion.
I was just apologizing to Public Works. Sorry. Okay, planning commission. So I have learned through Oliver's group that historically, the county council and the planning commission meet for lunch in December, just as a gathering, kind of like a retreat, just get to know each other, talk about how we work together. And I didn't, just wanted to see if that is something that council's interested in doing, and if so, do you want to do it in December, or would you rather wait until the first of the year as well?
You're suggesting that the council and the planning commission meet together for that?
Yes, apparently, they've done this apparently for many, many years. I'm not, I, I don't know of a time that it's happened, but I was told it happened for many, many years. So they are just wanting to know if we want to coordinate and have a lunch, or council wants to have a lunch with the planning commission.
I'd be delighted to have lunch with the planning commission, and I'd suggest January, I think, will be pretty busy right up till the last council meeting.
I concur with Counselor Marshall.
I'm sorry, did Michelle, did you have a thumbs up?
I, I did. I, I concur with Counselor Marshall. I think it would be great, and, but I, my preference would be January as well.
Okay, I agree as well.
And you as well? Okay, so that's four of us.
Great, thank you. We'll get that scheduled.
Great. Counselor reports. Are there any?
I have, I have a very brief report. I attended, oh, about a couple of weeks ago, WASAC training on comprehensive plan updates, and they filmed the entire session, all of the sessions, that I, I sent out a link to all of you, so I just wanted to highlight that. It was excellent training. There's a variety of topics you could just pick and choose if you want to see the information, because there's counties throughout the state providing their experience, so I found it very helpful.
It was certainly extensive, and thank you for sending all of the links to that. It was easy to follow and, and super informative, because you can come and go with that information as time allows. Great. Other counselor reports. Work session request. Let's look first at the Clean Water Rate Study.
Yes, so this is a work session request from Public Works. I believe this is the one that came before council and a staff report earlier. Public Works is working with Mark Gasway and his staff to see if they have the capacity to do the, a rate study, but they would like to get feedback from the council and a path forward.
I support that, and I see they are looking for only 30 minutes. I, I support that work session. Do others as well?
I support it as well.
I do, I do as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
The second, the second work session request is for parks and lands, park fee program also, looking for 30 minutes. They apparently have not reviewed these fees in at least more than a decade, so presenting some information in the work session and getting feedback from council on that as well.
I do support taking a look at those. Others as well?
Yes, I agree as well.
Would this, would this be another January request? Kathleen, would this be another January request?
Yeah, we're going to be looking in January. If for some reason we have a little slot before the end of the year, we'll try and sneak one of these in, but they may be the first of January, because we're, we're pretty booked with our work session.
Right. Okay, very good. How about policy updates? Are there any updates?
There are, Chair. Sorry, this is Jordan Bogie for the record. I've got a couple of updates this afternoon.
Great.
So at the, the last council time, I was asked to look a little bit more into DNR's land swap program, where they, basically, this is a, this is a program where the state is looking to sequester 2,000 acres of carbon-dense or structurally complex forest across the state. And so they've been working on this for a little while, actually, but we only just were informed of this recently. So there are, there's $70 million available from the National Climate Solutions Account, which is money that has been raised from the Cap'n Invest Program that was created out of the Climate Commitment Act from 2021. And essentially, what this program does is the, the state will purchase forest land in, in counties to put into trust, and then they will exchange that land for other forested trust land, and that, that land that is, that it's, that the lands that they purchased are swapped for would be put into conservation. So essentially, they would take, you know, this old growth forest, basically, that has a lot of carbon in it, and that is, you know, structurally complex, and they would basically sequester it away so that unlike other managed forest trust lands where, you know, there are a variety of activities that can, can be done depending on the forest land, this would be just conserved. And so this would not necessarily involve county land. It could be a swap of state forest for other state forest land, but they would require the council to submit a letter of interest if the county was interested in, in being a part of this program. in, in being a part of this program. And so because we were finding out about this a little bit late in the overall process, we're a bit behind the eight ball. And actually, DNR was supposed to have an initial list of acreage that they were looking at, presented to the Natural Resources Board on Monday. But they have pushed that back to December 1st. So there may be an opportunity, if the council is still interested, to at least express interest in this program. However, the way that the budget proviso is written for this program, they need to have their full initial list submitted to the state by the end of the year. And so I also sent an email to the council with more detailed information. Happy to answer any questions, but that's where we're at right now.
What do you see as the total cost in terms of actual dollars or land to the county?
So it doesn't, you know, there may be some de minimis staff time related to working on this project. But in terms of county funds, there wouldn't be any county funds exchanged. This would simply be the council expressing that they are interested in the swap happening in Clark County for some of these lands.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I had forwarded some PowerPoint slides and a summary of the legislation. It basically came from the timber industry. And I think each counselor was invited to have a tour of a local lumber mill. It's, it's an international firm. And they were, they were going to go into not only a tour of the lumber mill, but also explain their view of this legislation. It completely came out of the blue for me a couple of weeks ago. And as I learned more about it, here's what, I just think it's a very poor publicly thought-out process. And what I understand is that this legislative session, there is bipartisan movement amongst the timber counties to amend or repeal this law. Because in some view, it will do just the opposite. I mean, I'm all in favor of conservation. And as you probably have heard, I mean, I have been supportive of conservation in every square inch of this county. But this, I think, is very poorly thought out. The more I learn about it, I think the more harm it will do, not only to carbon sequestration, but also the timber industry. And so I would like to take a knee and wait to see what, if anything, happens within the legislative session to amend or repeal this law. I don't want to express any interest in it whatsoever. It'll do harm to our conservation efforts, according to some of the scientists that provided the work for the, on behalf of the timber industry.
Is there a counselor who wishes to agree or express the other perspective?
I have another perspective. And I, it just seems this has come to us late, and there's really not time to answer all the questions that come up. There are differing opinions between various conservation organizations and the timber industry in terms of how this program would benefit carbon sequestration. I know DNR has offered to come and present information about this program to the council, and it appears that we don't have time before the end of the year. But I would be very interested in having DNR come and talk about the program. And, you know, we could have a pro and con if that's of interest as well. But I'd just like to know more from DNR about how the program is intended to work, what the opportunities may be if this is a project that will be continuing beyond this first, maybe this first phase of setting aside some of the old growth, more complex forests. But I'm, I'm still interested in this, but I recognize we don't have time to respond before the end of the year.
Thank you. Other councilors?
Yeah, I, I think this just came to us so late in the game. And from all the information that I've read about it, it doesn't seem like it's flushed out very well either at this point. So I don't, I'm not very confident in this, this whole program. I'd be willing to see what they have to say about it. But I, I do think it's a bit late at this point.
Well, if we wanted to pursue, I would say we would have needed three thumbs up to do that because this is not an actual request before us. But at this point, we're hearing a couple of too late, too much, not enough information. And that would indicate that there maybe isn't a support of three for going forward. That's my read of the council. So unless you disagree with that, I would be ready to move on.
I would, I would just-
We could talk about DNR giving a program for the council, perhaps with another entity or two at a later date in January.
Right, that's, that's what I am requesting. And we can bring it up in the new year and might inform what position we might take on any future legislation.
So I, to be clear, I am a no vote.
And I think that is a good idea, counselor, because then we know what we're dealing with. Counselor, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, to be clear, I am a no vote at this point. I would, if this conversation's going to occur in the legislature, I mean, it does us no good to evaluate it here at the county if the legislature takes it on. If the legislature doesn't take it on, then I would revisit the idea of, okay, well, DNR, come and give us a work session on it. I'm not prepared to give them a letter of interest at all right now because right now I don't think the program is well thought out. So I, and so I would take, just wait to see what happens in the legislative session to see if-
Yeah, there's agreement on that, counselor.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there is agreement on that. And Kathleen, let's explore in January the topic again, if we wish to have DNR along with another agency or two perhaps, to give us a work session on the program.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Executive session, it comes next, unless there are policy updates in addition.
Just a, just a little bit more on this. I just wanted to say also, I'm investigating why we didn't hear about this program until the last minute because I know DNR has been working with some counties since the spring. So I just want to let you know that I'm going to be following up with that because it'd be nice if we were informed in a more timely fashion. And then the only other thing I just wanted to bring up for council, I think I forwarded this to folks, and you may have gotten it from some other sources as well, but the BEAD, Broadband Equity Access and Deployment, Volume Two, has, has been released. And so we are working our way through that and understanding that, as well as working on the, sort of separately, but also in the realm of broadband, the franchise agreement, or not the franchise agreement, but the agreement with Comcast to lay fiber in the Northeast Battleground Lake area. And I've actually got a meeting with Paul Moran tomorrow to discuss some of that further, based on both BEAD and our agreements with Comcast, and then also a little bit related to some of the conversation that happened at this morning's session, related to how does this fit in with the franchise TV agreement, you know, all that fiber is for television and for broadband internet. So I will be just following up on that a little bit as well. So just wanted to give you that, that heads up, and I will send more information as I get it.
Thank you. And I particularly appreciate you trying to figure out with DNR why this county was not included in initial communications. There certainly would not be any apparent reason why it wouldn't have been. So thank you. Or is there anything else by way of policy update?
Nothing else for me.
Okay, thank you so much. And that concludes the main agenda of council time. But we will turn now to executive session. And I would like to ask Leslie Lopez, I show that we have three executive sessions planned for a total of 50 minutes, potential litigation, collective bargaining, and one that is relative to RCW, 42.30.110. Number one, a Roman, a Roman numeral, little two. So-
Chair Barhamin?
Yes.
If I may, Leslie Lopez, I'd like to amend, I'd like to amend the agenda for the second one, the collective bargaining. Instead of 15 minutes, it will be five minutes. So it will be a total of 40 minutes.
No objection there?
And no after action.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All righty. So it is, let's see, right now, 14:22. That would make it, uh-
3:05?
Three o'clock, correct?
I think for 40 minutes, we'll be close to 3:05.
So let's make it 3:10, that we will meet back in council time. And until then, we'll see you in executive session, councilors.
Okay, we'll resume our council time. We have nothing left on the agenda. We've concluded our executive session. There is no action to be taken at this time. We'll go ahead and adjourn.